All this meeting to order.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Kahoho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsa Beck. Williamson.
Here.
Ingstrom.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
There are no changes.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Please call the rule.
Henson.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. Uh, we have A, present- presentation update from Boom Flex. So I have invited, uh, Emily and Evan Jorgensen to, uh, share with us the progress that they have made on 608 Carroll Street, otherwise known as Boom Flex.
We present from.
Oh, you can just stand right up the gate.
Well, thank you for inviting us to speak to Samir Science, who brought back the Socrates, and us ourselves and our project council. Evan Jorgensen, Chief Information Officer at Boom County Hospital, a member of the downtown boom board, which was recently recognized by Main Street Iowa.
Good night, Emily Jorgensen. I work in analytics for global manufacturer. Our son Elliot is here with us today as well. We currently reside in Ames and are moving to Boom early 2027. On this blank sheet. When we first saw that this building was for sale, it was really intriguing. It was also under contract with another buyer at that time. So we had a season to kind of daydream about what this place could be and learn a little bit more about what it meant to the community. Like many residents in Boom, we also want many spaces to go with our young family and to do.
When the prior sale fell through, we made an offer and closed the building a quick two weeks later. We had an opportunity to review the Estes and Fairway assessments completed around the wise closure. There are a bit general in nature, but included that the roof is the end of its usable life. There's an expansion joint that needs to be investigated. The building's seen new mechanical systems and there's deferred maintenance, uh, route. There's also modernization to be done, the way of accessibility and life safety improvements. This building has been a pillar for decades and improvements are no different than the improvements made to the building we're in right now. Ultimately, the maintenance, the Y had deferred is only one reason it closed, but there's nothing on these reports of a counter.
But the flex is an exciting opportunity for us to solve a complex problem, stretch some of our creative muscles and provide a meaningful impact to the community that we plan to call home for the next 70 years if we're lucky. You can read our mission on the slide, but in short, we're using existing resources to deliver a sustainable solution for providing amenities to the area's residents. On the right are the flex's three core values. Physical is an obvious category of wellness, but we also want to consider mental, financial and environmental wellness. Recreation can be through informal play, formalized activities or other activities in the building that leave you feeling frustrated, energized when you leave. And last but not least, community, there's a loneliness epidemic that we're only going to overcome by getting folks out of their house for a walk or a cup of coffee. And so bringing people together for these engaging activities can really bring, bring that to a close.
There's an exit.
If you want to, hang on just one second. We have an audio issue for the people that are on Zoom. We're going to see if we can fix that really quick.
Can you hear us now?
We had a chat.
Yeah, it was, it's Diane says it's good.
Okay, we got it. I think we're good to go.
Right, so the next slide.
Thank you.
Excellent, sorry.
Don't.
Uh, so the flex will be operating spaces, the services similar to our predecessors. It includes a gym, studios and/or a area of practice, changing rooms, event room with kitchenette, concessions cafe, childcare, be it for gym goers or for after school care. There'll be casual social spaces, an office space for our staff and our partner organizations.
Go to the next slide. We have admittedly, but haven't had the time to publish this timeline. The building has been vacant for several years and there are a lot of complex variables with the scope of work. We set out on this project to think, um, the first year working with our contractors throughout the year tonight to formalize bids, work their budgeting, optimize our plans, dial in paperwork with the building department, identify our lending partner and other key stakeholders. With a reinforced sense of urgency, we're about to embark on what we're calling with stabilization work. So we hope to have the roof replaced by winter with HVAC being a close and collaborative second to kind of go hand in hand. Once we have the HVAC in place, we can restore water to the building and proceed with the main floor areas. We're considering a cool phase two and stand by what was previously communicated in that that is an expensive project that can only occur so quickly once the flex has revenue. Phase three will involve a deeper dive into AD requirements. And if an elevator will be necessary before we are able to utilize any of the upstairs and downstairs spaces, there's a lot of great square footage upstairs and downstairs that we would intend to make use of.
Next slide, please. So here are some more details on the phase one of this renovation. So we'll work on the exterior, including replacing the roof, gutters, cleaning the brick facade and repairing it. We'll be replacing mechanicals with new high efficiency HVAC, reworking plumbing, any, and updating electrical and lighting systems. There'll be life safety improvements, including central fire monitoring, sprinkle in insulation and bringing emergency lighting up to earth. There'll be numerous technology improvements, including upgrading the network, installing a dual access system and installing surveillance systems. We'll also be working towards addressing any EDA compliance concerns with refiguring the restrooms and changing, uh, route for general accessibility. There'll be, uh, mold abatement, uh, as well as mess, as those units, uh, abatement as necessary. We plan to repair the gym and racquetball floors and provide significant cosmetic updates for it.
We closed on opening December 8th of last year. We met with the mayor, city administrator and councilman Mormon a couple of weeks later outside of the flex. In this meeting, we learned that the city had hoped to purchase the building. We have been in contact with the seller's agent. And while we were not seeking an offer, we provided our agent's contact information so that the city could send an offer if they chose to engage. Late December, a couple of weeks later, we sat down with Mayor Stein and wrote a joint statement about the complementary nature of the flex and the recreation complex, highlighting that the two projects are serving different needs in the community and can coexist. In January, January, the city administrator invited us to City Hall for a meeting about our project. We asked for an agenda and the response was that they'd make. So we were kind of surprised when they let us know on our arrival that Fairway was there to make us an offer. The intent was to carry to demolish the building and donate a lot of that to the city. From our perspective, we have provided our agents' contact information. We then sat down with the mayor and wrote this joint statement about how our projects had worked together. And yet here the city was trying to buy our building to be demolished when we had purchased it as a passion project. When they'll follow it up a week later, we obviously declined and the following day that my statement was published.
So February, we started engaging with the building department. For those who may not be aware, the building sits in a residential zone. The zoning standard speaks for recreational uses operated primarily, uh, not operated primarily for commercial use. So we were seeking to understand the amount of nonprofit used to satisfy the zone. Is it a majority? Hundred percent? How do leaseholder arrangements come into play? We had several phone calls and emails throughout March and April. And in May, the building official and fire chief, uh, conducted a walkthrough of the flex. At the end of May is recommended to us to follow, uh, conditional use permit to be able to operate the facility as a for-profit entity. On September 3rd, we submitted the permit application, a justification and building plan for review. A better understanding of nonprofit use to satisfy the zone would have allowed us to finalize our business model and move forward with the lending process soon.
This is relevant because Campfire, a local nonprofit, would like to offer after school care in our building due to the proximity to the school being on the bus route location in town. But chair not large enough to utilize the full facility. So we communicated our plan for operations in March. The city received a fire's letter of support in April and we're continuing to work through it.
So without clarity, we've pursued the initial use permit. Uh, we will now go through planning and zoning and then the zoning board adjustment. We'll participate in these meetings and have hoped to have a decision by October or by the end of October. Once a decision is made, we're ready to move forward with financing the project. We have identified a supportive lending partner for the project. We have a great relationship with their sister bank in Ames and we're excited to build relationships with their boom team.
So this time we're on track for the year planning that we set out for. This is a complex project and the building has been vacant for several years with major department maintenance items to address. We know it hasn't looked like a lot from the outside thus far, but want to assure everyone that we're working diligently to get this off the ground as quickly as possible. We don't see it as a matter of if, but how. Most importantly, we're insured in our decision to move our family to Boom. We purchased the lot for our forever home a year and a half ago, before the flex was on our radar, before Evan started working here. And we are just invigorated by the support we receive from the community. We appreciate every ounce of encouragement you all have shared. You can follow along with our journey on Facebook or Instagram and thank you again for the time. Don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you. Thank you very much for giving us a detailed update of everything that has gone on and everything that you've done. We're gonna let council member, Elsabet come in quick here. Um, but truly, I cannot, uh, emphasize enough that we know that there's a shortage of, uh, communal space in our city. Uh, there's a shortage of spaces where people can inter- interact cross generation, cross generationally. Um, and, uh, you all taking on this, uh, project, which is an incredibly heavy lift, uh, is, is absolutely commendable and I do thank you for doing that. Um, just so the citizens know, uh, with the, uh, the conditional use permit, that's the first step in getting the building operational. Um, as they mentioned, uh, that application will go to planning and zoning only and then to the zoning board of adjustment, uh, for approval. That would not go to council, uh, so they would decide on if that's suitable for a conditional use permit. And then after that, uh, we would have occupancy requirements, uh, getting everything up to code, which you're planning on doing from now until then. So, uh, we do have a couple of, you, you addressed the fact that, you addressed that, uh, you are going to have some shared use in the, in the facility. Uh, is Campfire still interested in partnering with you to rent out part of the facility for the daycare?
Please.
For the after school care? Okay, so far, so good. Um, so that's a portion of it. And have you, uh, identified a, uh, a, a building manager or project manager that will, uh, open the building in your stead?
Narsonay.
Yes, so you wouldn't be running the day to day? Is that correct?
We are, we are not starting to hire.
Right, not quite, not quite there yet.
We need to make sure that the building is operational.
Sure. Good.
Commitment to our day jobs and don't.
Absolutely, that's why I was, yeah, that's why I was asking. You have very, uh, demanding day jobs. Okay.
We've had people reach out interested in being.
Good.
Involved in areas.
Excellent.
Right, people who are, uh, involved with the Y and would like to be back in the facility.
Good. Um, and so I really want to know, at, you know, the end of the day, we, we put out a statement and we know, you know, we know the different, uh, uses and, and rules of the facilities that we're discussing here, the facility that you're talking about and of course the nascent, uh, rule from the city that's going to be voted on by the voters. I just want to reiterate that this communal space is, is a really socialization space, smaller footprint and things like that, right in the heart of, of the city. And is that something you would agree with?
Yes, and I think, um, a few weeks ago, when we did a comparison campaign on Facebook, we tried to highlight some of those differences where.
I think that was very useful.
You know, our, our basketball court's never going to be regularly inside. And we understand that, but that's still perfect for a pickup game. It's still perfect for kids to learn how to play basketball. It's still great to have a place indoors to ride.
The building is not optimized for spectators.
Right, yeah. So, you know, uh, having you here, it's been very, very helpful to elucidate the differences of what you're planning and really what your, your goals and your passions are, uh, vis a vis what the city is planning with our potential project. And so I do thank you for doing that as well. Um, so there's one other question I was going to ask, uh, oh, yes. So how can we help you? How can the city help you? I know you haven't asked for any financing or anything like that, but.
Yeah, the, the quickest way to help would be to, to get an answer on the zoning. So i- if there's, um, again, the zoning standard is not primarily operated for commercial use. So, so am I reading that correct? That if we had forty-nine percent commercial use and fifty-one percent nonprofit use, that that would be suitable for our three?
I'm gonna punt it to Bishop C.
In my opinion, I think that might be a legal question, but, um, we, we believe that if a portion of that building was being used for, um, for profit, then we would have to look at a conditional use. No, doesn't break down percentages of or anything like that, so.
So, but the permit is pending before the, the next, uh, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in October, still?
So with the way the calendar has set, so our, our planning and zoning is on the second Tuesday of the month and, uh, zoning board of adjustment is second Thursday. Because our month started on, uh, our zoning board of adjustments prior to our planning and zoning in October. So we're getting, uh, ready to go, getting, getting ready to go for October fourteenth. And then it will have to go into the, we remember that, uh, zoning board of adjustment. Yeah, we're, we're ready to.
Okay, so that, that'll be an answer to your question about the conditional use permit. And again, that goes for planning, zoning and zoning board of adjustments. Doesn't come through this body here. Um, the additional, uh, you know, there have to become code compliance and things like that. Um, you know, we can do inspection, inspections on that. I, I think that Chief Adams and Dave went out of their way to help go through the building. You know, they don't necessarily always do that on projects, so, um, I appreciate that you did that for them.
Since we haven't been in the building person long, it's important to put eyes on it and kind of see, um, what to expect on certain.
Good. Is there anything else that the city can help you with?
I don't think you want to start digging into things. We'll be pulling permits and having inspections, I'm sure, but not quite there yet. We're just needing to dial in that business model toward our finding thing and when we're ready to go.
Excellent. Uh, council, do you have any further questions?
Thank you for taking.
Okay, item four, uh, public comment for items not on the agenda. Anything on Zoom? I'm seeing nothing. We'll move on to number five, reports of standing committees. A, Policy Administration and Employee Relations Committee, Williamson.
No report, Your Honor.
B, Public Safety and Transportation Committee, Elsa Beck.
I report, Your Honor.
C, Utility Committee, Ingstrom.
I'm gonna hand this off to Bill. Wayland.
Wayland. In your packets is a little brochure flyer that has been put together by our lead service line coalition team. Um, I was approached a couple of months ago by a, uh, a group of people that were putting a coalition together to try to settle some of the EPA and DNR rules that are coming down with the lead service lines. Uh, it's, it's nine other communities that are over eleven thousand people, I think. So on the map represents all the people that were in coalition. Uh, just to put this into perspective for you, for the city of Boom, when this rule passes, uh, we have plus or minus fifteen hundred. I've already turned in the report to the DNR of how many lead lines we have. Fifteen hundred thirty-six, I believe, something like that. Um, they're, they're changing daily, um, when one has problems. But they're estimating that at ten thousand dollars a line. That for the city of Boom, you, and do the math. We're looking at a, you know, a million dollar a year problem with fifteen million dollar total. And right now the state is only set, or the, the federal's only set about a hundred and sixty-four million aside. We're looking at a one billion dollar problem for the state of Iowa. They're less than twenty percent of funding and they're asking for fifty-five, or fifty percent of that to be paid back and forgivable loans. So they're nowhere near funding this project and they're, they're passing it down. What generally happens in these EPA rules is it will have a ten-year rule with a three-year grace period by, so by year twenty thirty-seven, um, service lines in the United States will need to be changed. I, I don't see a problem with that and by all of the, joining this coalition is not to change, change the rules of changing lead lines, but to finance it a little better, you know, stuff like that. We've got a lot of questions back and forth and I've raised the question. There's not one rule in the National Plumbing Code that says you can't fix a lead water line, but yet they're telling us we have to replace them. So why don't they help us with plumbing codes and stuff like that? So what I guess I'm here asking you guys today is any local legislature, any new candidates running, get this out in front of them, let them see this, this brochure, see this information so they know what they're voting on when they come to the table at that time. So, thank you.
And I will say that I have reached out to Senator Green, um, and he responded back immediately that he was going to send the information that Wayland gave to us, uh, to his, uh, legislative services and try to get it on their committee, uh, agenda for the upcoming session. So if you all would reiterate that and we will have a new House representative at that time, uh, when that session starts too, so reach out to them as well. I plan to, that we're gonna need assistance, homeowner, homeowners are gonna need assistance because really this affects them directly, their service line. So, uh, let them know that, uh, we need some help getting, you know, our pipes safe for our citizens.
It was, it was a talking point in Washington too. It was at both senators, we talked to him about the lead line thing, hoping for a little help.
Yeah, absolutely. It could be a big lift for a lot of places. We're not alone, so if we work together, we can get some help. Anything further?
That's it.
Okay. The Economic Development Committee, Mormon.
Um, in front of you, I put a list of all the BDF grants and stuff that we have done in the past thirteen, twelve, thirteen months. Uh, there's fourteen total. Uh, Andrea is going to put together a total amount of money that we've spent. Uh, uh, we also done four downtown incentive fund grants at five thousand dollars apiece. And there's, I, there's two listed catalyst grants. There's a third one that we were just granted, um.
Ten O Three Marshall.
Ten O Three Marshall, that's Tina McDonald's face. Um, so there's three total, which is a good news for the city. But, uh, I just want to thank, uh, Bill and Andrea and Cory and Minda and David for all their work and stuff. This, this requires a lot of work. We could do walkthroughs and we go, come discuss it, then we go back and, and approve it. So I appreciate all your hard work, but, uh, the Economic Development Committee has been pretty busy. Appreciate that. Uh, we just completed the final walkthrough at eight eighteen, eight fourteen, Eighth Street, the national building and approved that. Um, and, uh, we also have a couple of, uh, the templates for the catalyst grants and the BDF grants that we have added some additional language and that will come before council next, uh, meeting. So, so I have your name.
Yeah, I know in the committee you were kind of back of the envelope totaling these all up, but if you add in the, the catalyst grants, that's gotta be over a half a million dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
Investment into our downtown. So, and that's.
Probably, it's probably pushing seven hundred.
Calendar year and the year's not over.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, six, Department Report, it's Building Official Dave.
Um, tonight, we bring forward to you guys, um, a request for a, uh, alley vacation. Uh, this alley vacation, it comes from the Boom County Engineers Office as part of a plan to build a new building up at their current site in the seven hundred block, Twenty Second Street. Um, they are going to tear down that metal building to the east of their main building um, and build a new, um, uh, shed there. Uh, that new building is going to allow them to get some of their, uh, larger equipment indoors. Uh, it's going to be a climate controlled building, uh, so it's warm and just cold storage for them. Uh, as part of this project, they're requesting a portion of the alley, uh, be vacated between the existing brick building and where the, uh, metal building is. Um, that area, that portion of the alley is primarily used and maintained by Boom County already. Um, we sent out neighbor letters. We got no dissension on it or no other requests on that. As, um, as they start moving forward with their project, part of that area, uh, of the alley vacation is going to allow them to have a, um, a larger turnaround area to, to access this new building. Uh, we took this request to planning and zoning, um, this month. Uh, we had six members in attendance and all voted to, uh, recommend approving on this. Uh, tonight we asked, uh, your guys' request, you is asked to move forward in the process, um, for the vacation.
We need a motion for this. Yes, yes. I, I move to vacate.
Okay. Please call the rule.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingstrom.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
That's my fault, I came late.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, do we need to set a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So item number two, set a public hearing for October seventh, twenty twenty-four at six P M for the consideration of a sale of a portion of right of way north south alley in the seven hundred block, Twenty Second Street, which abuts lots one through three and lots ten through twelve of block six of home subdivisions in Iowa. So moved. Okay, please call the rule.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ingstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly.
Yes.
Okay, B, uh, anything further? Hey, B, city attorney Jim.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Director of Home Board, Wayland.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to announce that, uh, Story Street reached final completion or substantial completion on Friday. Uh, we got a few, uh, odds and ends for minor, uh, fixes to look at and stuff like that. Nothing, nothing big. I, I will let you know that there will be a few change orders coming forward. Um, some of the things that made the project really nice and, and these were requests that I made so that we could comply with ADA compliance and stuff like that. Uh, Travis with Scenic Valley Railroad did an excellent job. His crew raised the tracks, uh, about six inches to even out the area and smooth things out. They removed three foot of soil from beneath the tracks and put, uh, good, good drainage and rocks underneath there. And we tied that into an intake to keep, uh, frost movement and anything further. When that was done, tracks and the sidewalks were raised about six inches. And to make ADA slope, I had to go back about fifteen feet for sidewalks each way to make things work. So things like that, uh, when we took out some of the mid-block crossings, we removed concrete and we found no concrete base under what we thought would have, stuff like that, just unforeseeable odds and ends. There'll be a few, few things like that. So I'll, I'll bring those forward or S E H will probably bring those forward when we're ready for them.
And I say it looks really nice and good job.
Um, and lastly, uh, below you in resolution thirty-two sixty-nine, I've got an internal street department for motion. A couple of years ago, I absorbed that, that position when I took the daily operations manager. And over the last two years, I, I felt like that we needed to move somebody forward in our department. So I've, I've moved this individual forward. He's been an eighteen-year employee. He's, uh, been very dedicated and he's been a major player on the team. So that's, that's the person I've chose for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. D, Library Jamie.
Your Honor, I am just happy that you remembered that we have a survey out and the more responses we get, the better our community's input and, um, long range duty for our reminder if that survey can allow.
How long will it be open?
It'll be open and talk over her, so.
Okay. Excellent. We're good at filling out surveys. E, Park Director Mike.
Your Honor, uh, I spoke with the, uh, playground equipment provider and we received it last Wednesday or Thursday.
For Franklin Park.
For Franklin Park, thank you. Uh, we were going to store it there, but there were way too many small items, so we took it to a safe place. We're looking at October. We're looking at October seventh, though. So we'll make it back a couple of weeks. And, uh, hopefully we didn't get rained before. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, F, uh, neither that with us, say, uh, G, Engineer, Bill?
No report, sir.
Okay, H, Public Safety, Chief Adams?
Yes, Your Honor, uh, the council agenda tonight, we have an alcohol license for whether or not, uh, whether or not we'll be putting on a, uh, event with, uh, Dan Gable and DMAC Foundation, host the night out at, uh, the DMAC campus. Uh, with that, uh, they applied for a five-day alcohol license, which is, uh, normal for events like those things. And I would answer either any questions or a request of motion for approval.
To approve. Second. Please call the roll.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho, 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 Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Thank you. If we will.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, I, Assistant City Administrator, Andrea?
I'm here to report.
Thank you. Uh, City Administrator, Bill?
Thank you, sir. First, Resolution three-two-six-seven, Resolution authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement between King Construction LLC and the city of Boone. If council remembers, uh, we had a, uh, mediation date of September sixth that we attended, turning as the fellows, uh, there, we had a mediator that went about eight hours. We did come to a settlement of four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, if you remember, the goal of this city was, we reached that, twenty-five thousand of that amount comes from EMC. Uh, so what I would ask, uh, I'll answer any questions first. If not, I'd ask for, uh, approval of that resolution to include that there may be a few little legal, uh, changes to the one that's in the packet, and those obviously would be, uh, approved by legal before we would agree to them.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second. Discussion or questions?
It was brutal.
Eight, eight hours?
About eight hours.
Yeah, but it was the best deal we could cut.
Yeah.
Both, both parties, the lawyers, the mediator agreed.
EMC has taken care of forty-five thousand of that, just to be clear.
If we went to arbitration, we, it would be an additional at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we didn't know what the arbitration would be, the final result would be.
Thanks for, for participating. Okay, motion is second. You can further? Roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho, 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 Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay, my next item is Resolution three-two-six-eight, Resolution approving the city of Boone's participation in the Revitalize Iowa's Sound Economy Program, which is the RISE grant for, uh, the new road that we've discussed, uh, for the Daisy Project. Um, the road will be about seventeen hundred feet in length, thirty-one to forty-one feet, uh, wide, depending on, uh, the area of it, the depth of the pavement will be nine inches. Right-of-way for the project would be about eighty feet for the, uh, right-of-way in the RISE grant that you have in your packet, the, the estimate, cost estimate was four million nine nine eight three six four. We actually have reduced that, uh, to fours, three hundred and eight, two two five. So that will bring down the city's share of it, uh, from what was in the application. Uh, I don't have any other further to add to it. I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I'm motion to approve, uh, three-two-six-eight, and the city's share of the RISE grant for the project.
Quick question, timeline on that?
Uh, I talked to Perry today about that. They'd listed in the agreement, or the RISE grant application, design time was November twenty-four to October twenty-five. Uh, talking with S E H this, uh, this morning, I don't think it's gonna take that long, uh, the full year. So I think we'll have something before that. And I'll add that, uh, Brendan and myself will be in Decorah on October eighth at the DOT Commission Hearing that will, that will hear this request for the grant. And that's when it'll be approved.
Motion? Second?
Second.
For the discussion.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho, 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 Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Just a few reminders from me, uh, our next council meeting on October seventh, we're gonna have a groundbreaking at five P M. Uh, at Eighth and Ringel Street where the new townhomes are going up. This was a, a tax credit project that we see tax credits from the state. They have now, uh, started to build their first townhome. So we're gonna have a groundbreaking there at five P M on October seventh. Uh, there are a couple of information meetings, uh, for the rec center. One is the twenty-third of September at six P M here in the auditorium. The other is the twenty-fourth of September at noon in the auditorium. And then the Boone County Economic Growth Annual Meeting luncheon will be at Cobblestone on October eighth at eleven A M. And, uh, I need to know from the elected officials, uh, who plans to attend that. At some point, I need to know it to the next week. I'll start a list once I can let them know who's planning to attend.
Who's the present director?
Uh, Mike.
Nick?
Agricultural Secretary will speak at the lunch.
Say it again, that, the meeting part, the date.
October eighth at Cobblestone at eleven A M. And I'll just need to know who plans to attend. I'll plan on being there. Okay?
I'll be there, Bill.
Barry?
Cory?
Bird?
Barring some catastrophe.
Cory, Bird.
Hey.
Linda? Okay. So I've got five of you so far. I know you're a poor guy.
Yeah, it works.
And you just let me know when you, when you can.
I know.
Last, I've got my five. That's ten, that makes it easy. So, uh, I will let them know, a staff will attend as well. Department heads, you'll need to let me know if you want to attend. Oh, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
Still moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho, 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 Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Number eight, ordinance, third reading, ordinance point three oh nine to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the all train and off road ordinance as amended, chapter seventy-seven. So moved.
I got.
Please call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho, 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 Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Do a dot.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ho, 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 Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Okay. Now, B, second reading, ordinance twenty-three eleven for the Division of Revenues under section forty-three point one nine Code of Iowa, Amendment number ten to the Southeast Boone Urban Renewal Plan.
Still moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho, 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 Kelly?
Yes.
C, second reading, ordinance twenty-three twelve for the Division of Revenues under section four oh three point one nine Code of Iowa for South Marshall Urban Renewal Plan. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Ho, 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 Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, number nine, Mayor's Comments. Uh, first and foremost, thank you for everybody for coming. I really appreciate having a full house and all the citizens participating in this, so please do come again. Uh, and if you do have comments, uh, we always have an item for public comments on the agenda. Uh, also, uh, thank you to Public Works, uh, for everything you did, uh, for the Story Street construction project, all the communication you did for the businesses. Uh, it was greatly, greatly appreciated, and I know it was a long road, and I know there were a lot of headaches. But I, I couldn't say that, uh, it couldn't have, I can say that it could not have ended up better. It's very beautiful to look at and very nice to drive on, and kudos to you. Uh, thirdly, um, we have bufferability days coming up, coming weekend in September.